Good evening and welcome to the September 9th, 2021 meeting of the Acton School Committee. And we're going to begin our meeting by pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have adjustments to the agenda?
We do. I'm gonna go way into new business first and add an A2 please. A2 will be FOIA training. It was brought to me this evening that we have a new business discussion on FOIA training for the school committee. And secondly, it's at the very beginning. I would recommend that we take the celebration of learning first, welcome our new staff and hear a brief backpack program update from Kristi and then go to comments from the public at that, just to give some more time for people to come if they choose to come tonight.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right, very good.
All right then, let's start with, we'll start with number three and 3-1 and I'll turn it over to you.
Great.
To introduce our staff.
Well, as the staff in the school committee know, we hired a lot of people this year. We hired a good number of people in May and you met those teachers. And then, of course, we got into June and we didn't have a June meeting because we had, our meeting in May was quite late in the month. So, we hired in June, July, and it's late as August. And we have the rest of our teachers here tonight who you've already hired and voted on their contract and they've been working here for a couple of weeks. And I can tell just from their positive energy, they really like working here. So I'm gonna start by just introducing our new gym teacher, who's Nate Kulpitz on the end. And he's just gonna give you a little bit about himself and his thoughts about the place. How's that sound?
All right.
All right, so, yeah, so my name is Nate Kulpitz. I'm incredibly excited to be here. Before I was here, I have a history with healthcare. I was working in healthcare for five years. Physical therapy, but more recently, I've been an athletic trainer and a strength and conditioning specialist at Southern Maine Healthcare. I was working over at Massabesic and so I was working with mostly middle school and high school athletes, working injury prevention, all that good stuff. I've always had an interest in education as well as coaching, which I was doing in my own time on the side. So, when I heard about this position through a personal connect of mine, this is Lori Lodge, I decided to take the leap. And I was lucky enough for you guys to grab me, so.
Well, welcome.
Well, thank you.
And I can say, I actually have kids in the school and I was told on the first day of school, they both had gym on the first day of school and they said, "You are a kajillion awesomes." That's the verdict from second grade.
Thank you very much. Made my day. I appreciate it.
Jamie Leclair comes to us as our fifth grade teacher. We have a good-sized fifth grade classroom and we had to split that class so she's working alongside Sandra, who still has fifth grade. And I'll let Jamie tell you a little bit about herself.
So, hi, I'm Jamie. I actually have twin seventh graders, girls, so that, they've actually helped me to become a fifth grade teacher. I actually worked for 12 years for Catholic Charities in Maine. I started out as an assistant teacher there and I worked my way up to be the director. I received my 282, which is a special ed certification. And then I have my master's degree. I am currently working on getting my general ed certificate, which I'm taking two classes at the same time as diving into this new school year and learning new curriculum because that's what I do. Yeah, it's been awesome so far. I have an awesome class. They like to talk a lot, but other than that, they've been great. So, it's been really welcoming around here and thanks for grabbing me.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
A little note on Jamie. When we hired her, it was getting late in the year and I knew she had a couple upcoming interviews and I knew the schools and I'm going, oh, one of them's pretty comparable to us. So I said, "If I offer you a job, are you gonna not go to those other positions?" And she said, "Absolutely. I'll tell them I'm not showing up." I said, "You got the job." She wanted to work here, which says a lot. That's really, really awesome for us. So Matthew Brier is one half of our sixth grade team, which is new this year. And Matt's gonna be teaching the math-science side of that to our sixth graders.
So, I'm Matt Brier. I don't care if you use Matt or Matthew, both are fine. And I'm a recent graduate from UMF. I have both my bachelor's in education and mathematics with about three-quarters of a degree in science as well. Mostly because I'm a bit of a nerd. I kinda like what I teach, just a little. I spent one year working up in Winthrop, but it turned out that wasn't the district for me. I've gotten to learn a lot about what I do and don't like about a school district. And coming down here, I've already gotten to see such an incredible world of improvements. And honestly, it's amazing and blows me back how strong this community is. I'm really excited to get to be a part of it and to get to help some of these kids get through it as well.
Great.
Thank you.
This is a nice addendum.
Yeah, I also got hired as sort of a bit of a parent, not just with Elizabeth, but also my wife, Ms. Morgan back here, Jessie.
So Jessie's one of our newest ed techs. So, within special education, Sharon interviewed her and hired her for a position. So Matt and Jessie come together. And I do understand you just found housing, am I correct?
Literally yesterday afternoon.
There you go. Now they gotta pay the rent. No more snow and drive to work. There we go. Very, very nice. So very. So Elizabeth Higgins comes to us with, from out of state, but originally from Maine. And she's the other half of the sixth grade team with English Language Arts and Social Studies. Now I'll let her fill in the blanks.
All right, so I here, I'm the less nerdy of the sixth grade.
The better half.
But that's okay. Um, yeah, I taught for four years at Sacopee Valley and then I randomly moved to Arkansas after finding a Google ad. And then I stayed there for four years to teach and then I'm back here because I miss my family. So, yeah, I'm really excited. I have a double degree in education and English and that's what I teach, so. Yay.
There we have it. These are your newest teachers, our newest teachers to our family.
Good.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
Awesome. I think if it's okay with you, we'll transition right over to the other part of number three, which was Kristi and the backpack program, as we discussed at the last meeting, for just a quick update on that. And then we'll let these people get home to their families. And then we'll go to public comment. We haven't had a public comment yet. So you're all set. Yeah, okay? Okay, Kristi, it's all yours.
All right.
Did you wanna let them leave, the new hires?
No, they said they wanted to stay for Kristi's piece and they'll all go together.
Okay. Mask exodus.
Yeah, easier to take the whole row. What are you working on there?
Yeah, it was just a matter of pressing power, so. Why not? So, nice to be back with you guys. I haven't been here since my first year when I was doing this. Year four, still happy to be here. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the backpack program. As of this year, I am the coordinator for that. I've taken over Lindsay's position. So, a little bit about the backpack program. Its purpose is to provide meals and snacks for the weekends and vacations. So, who can access the backpack program? Any family experiencing insecurity in food. So, some families might come to us because they've lost a job, there's been an unexpected illness, maybe they need some healthy choices. Anybody going through a tough time is welcome to participate in this program. So, how is the backpack program supported? I have to say, I've been so amazed at our AUS staff who have really gone above and beyond. Weekly, there's a sign-up sheet for folks to bring something in to help donate to that program. The PTG also helps support us when we fall short. And the community, which is really awesome. Right on our website, we have information on that and what people can donate and where they can bring it, so that's helpful. Last year, super excited to announce that we are collaborating with Helpful Maine. So they're an organization working in the York County area looking to end child hunger. We are one in 15 schools that they're serving right now. And each month, because that's kind of our need, they are bringing us a boatload of food to help support our pantry. It's been really a beautiful collaboration. They're doing good stuff.
Right.
Yeah. So, how are families access the backpack program? Multiple different ways. There's been outreach via Blackboard, maybe in a news letter. I've asked staff if they've noticed somebody who is participating or accessing our snack bin. That also comes out of our backpack program to let me know and then I would reach out to those families to give them a little more information on this program. Once we identify a family, we're very discreet. We have our own backpacks here that we provide for families. We fill that up on the weekend, on a Friday, and set that in their classroom for them to bring home. And this year, we're starting off with some small numbers, but every year, it just kinda depends on the need. Any questions? Is that a big crack?
This is a great, this is a great program to have for our community. It just supplements what they can get from the town, food pantry and what comes in sometimes in the truckloads of stuff that Ted brings in to the community, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
We're well supplied here, so.
Good.
Yep.
Well, how long have we been doing the backpack? Seems like a long time.
Do you know a little bit better, CJ?
Um, I mean, I've only been in the school for
Even when you were on the board.
Three, four years, but it's been a long.
We've been doing it for the last 10 years.
I was.
So I know it's been going on this.
Yeah, it's been quite a while.
When I was part of the PTG, I was going to the grocery store shopping for the backpack program.
That's me now. I'm like, no kids, that's not for you.
Yeah, the teachers do a fantastic job of donating just to the backpack program themselves. Lindsay has done a great job of strong-arming them for the last couple of years.
Oh my goodness, yeah.
So you're signing up, right?
Yes, I know.
Great job training them.
That's where, it's nice where we have this new collaboration. I know our staff is always gonna wanna help, but that doesn't have to be as big of a portion for them. All right, thank you.
Just one more question.
Yeah.
How do you like your new office?
Oh, you guys all went down. Oh, Indy, he's so sweet to me. It's beautiful and the kids absolutely love it. It's peaceful and calming, yeah.
That's the best location in the building, right Kristi?
Uh huh. John wants to boot me out.
All right, team, thank you very much for being here tonight.
All right.
We really appreciate it, guys. Have a good night.
See you tomorrow.
Yep. Bye-bye.
Tomorrow. Let's see, tomorrow.
That's right.
Kristi, hi, thanks.
Okay. Now we're gonna open it up for our comments from the public. And I just wanted to see how many people are planning to comment from the public. I know we have some other guests here. You are and you are, okay.
A maybe, two and a maybe.
Two and a maybe, all right.
I wanna thank you for giving me this time, Mr. Ross. I really appreciate it. And I wanna thank you here. But my concern is, I'll give you a little introduction of myself. Number one, I am a mother, a grandmother. I own my real estate company and I'm here to discuss, well, not discuss, introduce what my concerns are. I have nothing, no complaints with the school budget, no complaints at all. I have no complaints with the teachers. I think they're doing a marvelous job. But I do have a complaint about face masks. Now, I'm not gonna have a debate on it now because I have more discovery that I needed to print and I think we need a public meeting because this morning, I put in a page of a school board meeting tonight at 5:00. In 10 minutes, I got so many comments of pros and cons, pros and cons, not just pros and not just cons, that all of a sudden I was censored, censored with the comments, which that isn't right, okay? I'm gonna give each of you first. And this is just one of the many information that I have. This is from Abbott Consulting Forensics, okay? About face masks. Simple, easy reading, but to the point. I'd like you to read it, but not now, but I really want you to read it. And I really would like, we need a public meeting, so I'm asking. And I think parents need to have an input, whether it's pros or cons. That's all I'm asking. And we need to discuss this because a lot of parents are concerned about face masks. I myself, I'm one of them. And usually, I don't intervene in anything, but we've been doing this for a year and a half. And please don't make me start rambling on because I can take an hour. We've been doing this for a year and a half. The virus is not going away, it's here to stay. It's here to stay, so we have to deal with it and not by just masks, okay? And I think that's it, short and sweet.
I just went over to Jen, you might wonder why I did that. I just asked Jen to enter this as part of the public record for the minutes of the school board. So although we haven't had a chance to read it, Jen, as the secretary, has a copy.
And I have more information.
Right, so it doesn't get lost.
That contradicts the CDC and the WHO and et cetera, et cetera. And Dr. Fauci and all this. And I have all this material that needs to come up and presented before the parents and the public because this is the town of Acton. I love the town of Acton and we need to discuss this. We need a public meeting. Questions?
Well, one of my questions is, if you said you think we should take other measures besides masking for safety, what other methods do you think we as a school committee?
Right now, I read this. Let's discuss it because masks are not the answer, okay? If you read this, information, okay? He explored all different kinds of masks, okay? And this was dated 9/6/2021, recent, okay? So this is not outdated or anything like that. All different kinds of masks in this. And it's simple reading. I mean, I think you can grasp it.
I just would, I just like to take this opportunity to explain how the school committee came to our decision on.
Well, you can, I mean, but I've said my piece.
Yep.
And.
Well, just to go along with that, so that everybody understands why we have masking at Acton Elementary School. We had a really good year last year. We had a great track record of keeping our kids safe in the building. We were on a hybrid model, which was, the kids were in the building three days a week, every other week, two days and three days. Very little time that we had to send whole classes out, if any, maybe, maybe one time. And it was, it worked for us. We were not planning on masking when we came back at the beginning of the summer. We were excited about the fact that all the counts were down and that we were kind of getting a little bit on the other side of the COVID. And then the new variant came out and the count started going up. And as we discussed it, we thought, number one, our job as a school committee really is to, it's for the kids. It's not, we're on a school committee because we want the very best for our kids.
And I do too.
And with the new mandates that are out now, if, from the Board of Education, if you have masking in your schools and you have a child in a class that tests positive, you don't have to send the whole class out at this time, okay? Last year, if we had a child that tested positive, we had to go around and who have they seen? Have they seen phys ed, have they seen art, have they seen this? Now, we don't have to go through that because the kids have the masks on for protection.
Right.
The other thing is that we thought, you know, we would start the school year with masks and see where everything goes, where the virus goes, where the counts go and all that. And that it would be much more sensible for us to start with the masking, which every school district around us, by the way, is doing. And I'm a mother and a grandmother too. I have an eight-year-old in school in San Francisco.
This concerns me.
And it's not that, it's not that we think masks are great. It's just that we think masks are one of the best safety procedures that we can take as a board to protect our children and to keep them in the classroom because they've, we don't want them on their computers at home learning. We want them in the classroom. The kids wanna be in the classrooms.
And I agree.
And the teachers wanna be in the classrooms. And this is one of the ways that we believe as a board, we can keep the kids in the classrooms with their teachers and not see mass exoduses out of a classroom or an area because of somebody testing positive. Are they, you know, a cure? Absolutely not. And I mean, the debate on masks and vaccinations is like, you know, black and white goes back and forth. But we as a board believe that we made the right decision in requiring masking as all other school districts are now. They have to wear them on the buses anyway. That's a federal thing, so they already have to have them on the buses. So, one of the things that's different about this year is that when they go outside, they don't have to have them on. They get a break. Every time they go outside, they can take their masks off. The staff doesn't have to wear their masks when there are no children in the building, just like tonight. There are no children here, so we don't have to wear masks. But when there are children in the building, then the staff and anybody that comes into the building when the children are here, need to wear a mask. And I can say that from one of the first days, it might have been the very first day that school opened, I was in the building and John said, "Let's go check and see how the classrooms are going." And we did a little tour of several classrooms down in this area. And the kids were highly engaged and they were, they were so happy to be back. And I think the kids don't mind the masks as much as I think they've become accustomed to them.
Conditioned, conditioned, yes, conditioned.
Yes.
Yes.
So that it doesn't really interfere with their, with their ability to participate and engage in what they're doing.
Well, if you read this, it tells you why masks are not doing their job and they're harmful for children, okay?
But Virginia, let me just say, at the state level, that's where this argument has to be.
Yeah. But at the state, I mean, this, I mean, I think Governor, the Governor uplifted the restrictions of the mandate, July 31st is it? And I was told by the recommendation of Mr. Ross that you agreed, there was four to one vote, that masks should be implicated.
True.
Okay?
Yeah.
That's what I was told.
That's correct. It's a, we have a local school board policy.
Right. And another thing too, I just don't have all my discovery now. That's why I just wanted to introduce, you know what I mean, to the fact of masks save children.
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question where Mary was coming from. I just wanted to make sure I didn't read it wrong. Are you saying that this debate needs to happen at the Capitol? So it's a statewide decision, not local? Or was I misreading your tone?
Well, there was definitely something, back in July-ish, I heard rumblings of different schools saying it'll be parents' choice. And I was so happy. Good, let the parents decide what they wanted to, their children. But then it was almost as if these superintendents got bullied into, "All right, all right, but where else?" And that's what it seemed to have happened. But the CDC guy from Maine, I forget his name, but he was on every week. He's starting up again every week.
Yeah.
So, you know, it seems like they're gonna shut down everything with the amount of hospitalizations and.
But I'm just saying, I just want people's, parents' input in discussing with more material on the table, more discovery that I have about masks and what the CDC says and what, you know, WHO says too.
Well, right now, the CDC and the WHO are in conflict with different things, so.
Exactly, and I want to.
So that's why this is a fluid thing.
Well, print everything out, the information that I have. And that's all I'm asking, it's just a public meeting for parents to discuss it.
Do we wanna let?
But, but, you know, I would be happy to attend one of those.
It could be right here in the library.
I would be, I would be happy to attend that as a school board member, but I don't think that we as a school committee want to initiate that kind of a meeting necessarily because we voted, we agreed.
Did you approve the agenda? Not yet, did you?
We what?
Of the voting.
Yeah, it's in the minutes of the meeting.
But did you approve the minutes of the meeting yet?
Not yet.
Yeah, there we go.
Four points.
We will, we will shortly. We will shortly, which will make it, which will make it kind of a, like, okay, we made a vote.
Votes can be changed. Votes can be changed, am I correct?
We have to go along for the safety of the kids. Do I like masks?
On mask safety for the kids, if you read this information and this data?
I understand that, but we have to look at the whole picture.
I'm looking at the whole picture. Kids wearing these masks with this important information, it's not helping the kids. The virus is here forever.
Right, I understand.
We have the flu, to be isolate the kids?
I'm not gonna.
I can make a recommendation.
We're not gonna have a debate.
In the minutes.
Exactly. I'm just.
In the minutes, which you have, has been voted on yet. It's in there and I think it was Amanda, it's not in front of me, that mentioned that we can look at this on a regular basis. Meaning you made your vote in August.
Right.
In September, if the smoke is clear of COVID, the way I read your comment is, you'll revisit it.
Yes.
Now, when and how often you revisit it, we haven't talked about. So what I'm trying to say to you, Virginia, is this can be changed anytime the school board wishes it to change, is what I'm saying. This is a vote that happened last month. It's not on the agenda tonight. They'd have to add it to look at it again. You could look at it in October, look at it in November. Whatever you wanna use as a milepost or a benchmark to look at the data and make your own local decision. And I believe that's what you were getting at, Amanda, when we talked.
That's.
It's in the minutes.
That was our intention in the beginning. Let's start the year using the same safety precautions we used last year because they worked so well. And our, we didn't have, the kids didn't fall by the wayside. Already this year, Milledwood Day School in Arundel, this week, they had to go entirely remote.
And there's a school in Kennebunk as well.
And they're wearing that.
There's a school up in Penobscot County that went remote because they started with parents' choice. So they just today announced that they have to stay home next week, the high school and the middle school.
I mean, did you do this when somebody got the flu? Did you isolate your children when they got the flu?
No.
But the hospitalizations weren't where they are now either.
Do I believe all the statistics that the hospital gives us? No.
There is a rule, when 15% of the students are out due to something that looks like flu, the nurse can come to me and I can close the school to try to contain influenza.
We did have that a few years ago.
It got really close to it. And I said, "No, we're not there yet, Carol," and we pulled away from the 15%.
All I'm asking now, Mr. Ross and the school board, is to have a public meeting, invite parents invite parents, and to have their pros and cons and their opinions, and for them to be educated with information that I have for them. And I don't want to be censored, I don't!
Nobody's censoring you.
Somebody did on Facebook.
We are not in charge, we are not in charge of that.
I know, I understand that, I know, but I was censored because you probably could have had more people at this school board meeting if I wasn't censored.
But the meeting was still posted, correct?
Right, but Facebook is the thing.
Because, yeah, I'm one of the, I just want you to know that I am a moderator on that.
Oh, you are, okay.
And I did not, I did not send it.
No, I didn't, I didn't, but the comments were blocked.
Okay.
Okay, the comments were blocked.
Okay.
But why didn't they show up? Why did those people show up? They don't want to show their faces.
I don't know, I don't know.
Well, I know, but what I'm saying is...
But I got a lot of comments in the first 10 minutes, pros and cons, like I said, and it was very interesting to hear the pros and it was interesting to hear the cons.
But nobody wants...
I do want to hear both sides. Educate me, educate me.
I think as a board, I think, you know, we anticipated at the beginning of the year that we would be hearing things like this from parents. And the only comment that has come to us as a board through John is thanking us for the mask mandate and for doing our best to keep the kids safe. So I think what we need to do now is see if somebody else has any comments they want to make, any...
But why can't the town have a town meeting on it?
You'd have to do that, we can't...
Right, that's separate from the...
But no, the discussion could be...
For the town.
But why can't I have it at the school?
Well, yeah.
We can't be in charge of making this meeting, I don't think. We made a decision.
If you want to make a meeting, that's something you can work on.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful.
I want to be clear on what...
You don't want to have only parents there if you're talking about everything.
But anyone is welcome, all are welcome, you know what I mean?
My gut on this seems that, it looks like the box stopped with me, my gut on this, Virginia, would be, let's play this out a little bit and see what happens, to schedule a meeting right now after the school board...
Well, I just want to give people information before...
And you and I had about a 40-minute conversation this week about this, you know, about this, and I listened to you and I gave you some of my points of view.
Yes, and I listened to you too, and thank you very much for letting me speak here.
So I don't know that any production would ever come, and I think it would be very unproductive for us to have a meeting, as you suggest, right now. Because I think it'll just become, people are gonna come in with their mindsets and I don't know that it'll be educational, and it very much could be an us versus them thing, and I don't want to, I don't want to open up this community to that right now, because I don't think it's, I don't think it'll be useful.
How about next month?
I don't think it'll benefit the children. Here's what I would recommend, they're the school committee, I'm going to recommend to do exactly what was in the minutes, and let's look at how this plays out. This is school board number one of this new school year. Let's let it play out, a couple things can happen. You could have hundreds of people coming in saying, "I need a meeting," that might look different then. We could also have COVID numbers go through the roof and the state could say, "You don't have a choice anymore." So therefore, you're talking...
The governor said that, hello?
That could happen too. Or the numbers could swing in the other way and we are talking about not doing masks. So I'm saying, let's pump the brakes a little bit and give it a pause and let the system play itself out, then maybe a productive meeting could happen. I just don't feel like a meeting would be productive, it'd be counterproductive right now, Virginia. That's my thinking, because I think you just gave it to me. So that's my recommendation to the board anyway.
So how about in the months of October, November?
I think we look at it, I think we look at what, typically the influenza season, we're getting our flu shots coming right up. So I think generally, things spike when we move inside. I'd be very interested to see if the numbers go down in November and December, but again, I'm not a doctor, I would suggest based on patterns, they're probably not going to.
Yeah, but we could put it on the agenda as old business.
You can certainly do whatever you want with this.
You know, to relook at it.
And I think you need to relook at it, as Amanda suggested, you need to set those mileposts of when you want to look at it formally, not just open it up for a vote every month, I think that's dangerous. Because you may go with whoever shows up that night, I think you need data, I think you need a conversation, is what you're asking for.
I'm gonna give you plenty of data.
We're nowhere near having that meeting tonight, is what I'm saying, or soon, yeah.
So, I mean, it can be on the agenda for us to just say, is there anything, you know, are we thinking of changing it yet, or how are things looking? Things are either the same or things are better, and then we don't have to vote on it every month, we've already voted, but our decision is in place, just discuss.
Good idea.
You know, my thing was, I had, we get information from the Maine School Boards Association, so all the school boards, and there's a head guy, and he, you know, said, "You better have, you know, masks on your kids," is basically what he said, "If you don't have, if you didn't vote on that yet, you better vote that you have..." You know, and he's getting it from the federal and, you know, it all has been piled on.
Is masks healthy for the children, that's my concern. If you read this data and data on it...
I know, but there's not enough data on it. You could talk to one scientist and get, "Don't put masks on," the other scientist says, "You better put masks on," just so they don't...
I can assure this gets looked at because I entered it as an artifact of tonight's meeting with our secretary, that's what I did when I got up.
I should come on then.
Well, put it this way, I will read it, and that's what I just did, so this becomes an artifact of tonight's meeting, and that's why I did that. So it won't, we're not gonna read it tonight, and I think you know that.
No, of course, I understand, but I do want you, yes.
It'll get read because we just made it that way.
All right, okay.
Well, thank you for bringing that.
Yep, I know.
You're welcome.
It's okay.
Anybody else? Yes, okay.
Should I stand here or get in front of the camera?
I think we all know who you are.
Oh, you can stand wherever you want.
Make sure the camera's on.
I come here before you guys tonight because as a mom, as a childcare provider, I work at Bizzy B's, I feel like with the Y program that kind of dissipated, it hurt a lot of families. And with after-school programs like sports, I know you guys do 4H and all that, I just wrote down a couple things that, why we need to have an after-school bus. Children will play more sports and join after-school activities if there was a way for them to get home. Easier on parents that work nine-to-five jobs. They have to say no to their child because they have no way of picking them up on time, and that's heartbreaking. There will be less children home alone for longer hours after school with risk of getting hurt. I'm sure with this Y program, there could be 10-year-olds at home and we don't know about it, even eight-year-olds, you know, but parents have to work and trying to pick up from what happened with COVID. Being a daycare provider in this area, I see how hard it is on our active parents that work those nine-to-five hours to provide for their families. We have amazing teachers here, seriously, they have always been so good, especially Mr. Ross, to my children, they lend a helping hand to so many. For example, volunteering to stay later to drive a student home, one of those students are mine, and the teacher picks up on that every week, which I'm so grateful for. And to stay late when the parents are late for practice, but those teachers need to get home to their families as well and put dinner on the table for those families. If the bus department cannot do a late bus, is it possible to hire an employee for an extra couple hours? I know we have the vans available, just looking into options. I never knew honestly that I'd be in this predicament until my oldest daughter became a little older, and then I know I'd be here tonight, but, and maybe I am the only parent that needs it, but I feel like I'm not, just, there's a couple more, I mean, I only hold a daycare of eight, but I remember, I know when the Y care wasn't doing it anymore, I had parents jump in calling me up, like I can only take so many. So just for that, the safety of kids at home, make it easier on parents, this shouldn't be a struggle, and other reasons, these kids, they should be able to play sports, and they're saying no in their early childhood, you know, to sports because their parents can't get them from A to Z, so that's why I'm here tonight.
Okay. I appreciate that. I know that the Y care, Y care program is very short of help. And that's why they didn't have one enacted this year. I know that even in the Sanford schools, they're advertising they need more people to help with the Y care programs before and after school, so... I'm not sure that the board has the total answer to your predicament right now, I think it's something we can think about. We used to have a late bus for our high school kids, and so they could participate in sports at Sanford High, and then it got to the place where nobody was riding the bus. So we stopped paying for it because the bus driver would go and nobody would, nobody was on the bus, so...
Can I just ask, do we still have the cash program? Remember Gail Bovier did it, do you know who, somebody's gonna do it?
So we are gonna be opening all of our stipended activities and clubs, I just signed off on that, we want to get a month out of the way. Sports starts early because they have a competitive schedule, so soccer's already been gathering, but our clubs and activities for this semester, trimester, will start soon, so including after-school academic help as well as, you know, the writing club and some drama things and some other robotics in the spring. So yes, that's all, this year we're going back to quote "normal," and we're having activities like we did before our COVID year.
What I'm trying to think of is, see, we're always behind the April because we have to budget it. So nothing like that is in the budget this year. So when we get to January, we look at stipend positions and, you know, that, but, I mean, I don't even know if you're allowed volunteers on our buses, are we allowed to do that?
Can I ask though, I know with the daycare, and I don't know how you guys do monthly and with grants, I mean, I get grants through daycare stuff, do you guys do a monthly grant that happens now with COVID that maybe you could say with that grant money, can we pay a bus driver?
So there's a couple things there, let me speak to it. The ARPSR funding has not been approved, and I'll mention that in my update when you get to it, but I'm thinking here for you, because I'm on to something that, if our money is fully funded and if it's timely, there is a plan that Lori and I wrote with input from a lot of members that have to create this plan on how we would spend the money if we got it. There are some after-school components to academics to help learning loss because of COVID. Now, here's my question, I don't know for sure, if we did do two or three nights of a bus to get those kids that need academic support home, could some kids that are here for writing club with Mr. Wood get on the bus too? At this level, sitting here today in a theoretical framework, I'd say, "Why not?" I don't know the answers because I don't even have the grant yet. But if we do get that, I think we talked about like a October-November planning for like a winter academy, what we're gonna call it, which was after-school academic help, our application did have transportation in it. Now, there's the money if it comes through, but then I'll get to Kim and say, "Where's the driver and who's doing it?"
That's an "I" thing.
Finding drivers and not falling from the sky. So what I'm saying, Bridgette, is you're on to something here, we have to kind of do a wait-see. Mary's exactly right, there's nothing in the local budget for this now. But the school committee may want to think about in a year in advance. Because you don't just have one older daughter, you're gonna have a bunch that are gonna get older. So this isn't gonna change for you, because we know of all.
Right now, the younger ones are advanced, and we're kind of like back and forth, but...
No, but to put it in our regular budget to see if that works, but that's in January.
And I see that now, and also maybe this could be just a bug in the ear, and the grant thing, that came to my mind right away, that that could be helpful, because I know as a daycare provider and applying for that grant, I have to mark down and say what I'm doing for the daycare. So if we can't do that, then even next year, and going to the budget, you know, as well, like if you can get by in some way with the grant and add that in, that's awesome, and then we can work next year, because obviously that grant probably won't be there next year.
Well, the grant that we have written is not to support the recycling committee, the recycling group of kids, recycling club, the Green Club, okay, there's like 50 up in the middle of it. It's not to support the 50 Green Club kids to get home, it's an academic support mechanism for the kids that are here to get caught up in there, reading, writing, and arithmetic. But if there's seats available, why wouldn't we put those kids on the bus anyway? That was my thinking, and that's right off the cop on camera here, so I don't know actually now how that's gonna play itself out. But to me, it makes sense. In the interim between now and then, and before a budget for next year is created, I do know, and I don't know exactly who your connections are, but I know they're pretty deep because you run a business here, lots and lots of times when I'm involved with kids out front, somebody else is picking up somebody else's kid. There's a lot of that that happens, and that's about networking with somebody on Milton Mills versus H Road, because you get, there's two different sides of town, Acton Ridge and Fox's Ridge are two opposite sides. So it's who lives on your side of town that might be able to drop off your kid, and if there's anything we can do to help facilitate that, and we have parent permission to share that information, just like we do with classroom birthdays, we have our classroom information from moms and dads in that classroom, with your permission, we can share it. And then maybe there's somebody you don't even know about that has a younger kid, although you have kids in almost every grade, that might live there, that's the only thing I can think of.
Very happy marriage.
Right. I'm just thinking, for other people that might be watching and listening that are in the same predicament that aren't here tonight, that might be like, "I don't know everybody in town," that's another way to...
And that's actually, like, my husband knows everybody in town, but when it comes to me, I organize everything, I'm just that mom, and I actually pulled a friend of mine, actually just a daycare, and I took a percentage off the daycare to say, "Hey, can you go pick up my daughter this day of the week?" And we're blessed with, you know, the one teacher that takes her home, and she's so sweet to her, and then my husband can do one other night. So it's hard, so I think of it that way, like, just to get my brain going that hard as a mom, it would be easier to have that after-school help and just like, "All right, see you, hon," and then also I had emails that teachers were begging for children to play more sports and begging, you know what I mean?
You're right.
Because they want that.
You do, that's correct.
I'm not saying like, the begging could be also like, get these kids up off their toes because of, you know, how far we fell back. Not saying that it's, you know, because there's not an after-school bus or whatnot, I mean, but that would help.
But it certainly contributes to it, yeah.
It does, yeah, and it's another worry with that Y care, because that, they were so, that was such a big thing for here, and it stinks that they lost employees, like so many other jobs that, you know, people are losing. But, yeah, it's just, you know, kids being home alone, how do we know if there's not an eight-year-old home alone, 10-year-old, where parents have that safe spot to send them to a sport or a club?
Well, thank you for bringing that to us.
I have a question, how old is a child capable of being left alone? I'm just curious.
I don't know, I want to say 12, right?
There's no law.
No, it depends on the kids.
I wouldn't know, I'm sorry.
I don't think originally a 15-year-old can get in trouble.
She's five, she'd be okay.
Typically like 10, right? Think so?
Come home, we'll be burnt out. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Bridgette.
Did you have something more to share?
Yeah. I'm Shailene Gogro, I am here specifically as Jackson's mom, who's a member of the community. For me, in our situation with the masks and why I think it really needs to be revisited, is a kid like Jackson really needs to see a face. It takes him a long time to get to know somebody, and then having a mask on, his ability to recognize new people, old people, has changed. Also, and I'm sure you guys know this as educators, little kids really learn a lot by looking at the face. So I, and I know that the masks do work, you know, I have no argument of that, but I do think we need to think about developmentally, the effect on these kids, three years from now, five years, you know? And when we make mandates, we have to be inclusive of all children. So I would just like to go with Virginia and say, "I do think it's something that needs to be revisited. I also worry about, you know, how often are the kids changing masks? Do all kids have families that can provide masks, clean them, things like that?" So I do think there's a lot of room for discussion and hope that there's an opportunity for that.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other public comment? Well, thank you all for participating in public comment tonight and for what all of you brought to us as a board, and it gives us some more things to talk about and think about, absolutely. And to read about.
Right, exactly, because I have more for you.
All right then, let's go on to number three, we're on to number three.
Number four.
Number four, consent agenda.
Oh, yeah, consent agenda, number four. So I will look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Go ahead, you can second it.
Mary and Jeanette, okay, any discussion? If not, all in favor? Okay, so let's go on to number five, which is chair reports, we'll start with the superintendent's report.
Sure, I've got just brief four things to bring the community and the school committee up to date on. School is really off to a great start. It's amazing, and it's just, it's just great to have everybody here, it really is, the building has a whole new vibe to it, you know, and it's positive. Big, big thank you to Jennifer, Row at the Town, who received a lot of school supplies. She went on neighbors, helping neighbors to help out a couple of families, and then, of course, Acton residents just gave, and...
Because they do, it's amazing.
And she delivered, Andy was part of the process. I mean, how many things did we end up getting that kids and staff used?
I went up and picked up a whole truckload, and then she called the following week and said there was more, and Will went up and picked some stuff up too, so it was...
That's great.
It was incredible.
That's awesome.
Each classroom had a chance to get what they need for the kids, and that, we just want to thank Jennifer and that great effort, it was pretty neat, it was pretty neat. Boys and girls soccer is underway, just want to let you know that we do have an activity that's already in full swing, and they've been practicing, they had indoor practice tonight because of the rain. And when we get the ARPSR grant, this is a little, I'm a little frustrated, it's almost confusing.
Can you just stop for a second? Who is coaching the soccer teams?
Nate.
Oh, new phys.
Yeah.
Okay.
One of the recommendations to Nate is make friends when you come here so other people can coach, but it's gonna be part of what you need to do when you show up, because Ryan left, and he got it, and he's doing it. But I don't want him to be a three-season coach and a teacher, you know, maybe two seasons and maybe the spring somebody will step up. And we have such new talent and staff that I'm thinking we're gonna be okay, but it's early. Yeah, Nate's got this. So the ARPSR grant is the last one of the federal funding, and it was, it was over two years, and it's approximately $433,000 over two years. And we've hired people based on that money. The good thing is Kim, with books, is excellent, so we have an earlier grant which is carrying these new people and others. And basically, that money will get us through April if this, if it's March 1st, we get the money from this last one. It's weird that, or it's confusing that they keep moving the benchmark out to one where to actually get our money, because we filed the application, we were told how much, but we haven't had the green light to draw down on any of this. And then, once we get the green light, it's gonna be a month before we get our money back, because this is like the credit system, where you pay first, then you get reimbursed. And we had lots of good programming we thought of. I mentioned the after-school programming group, you know, call it Winter Academy, to help with the learning loss, because twenty percent of it has to be addressed to learning loss. Well, about eighty percent of our grant is really learning loss, not twenty, it's almost all of it. For those few other pieces, and we've talked about the sign and some other things that aren't happening, because we don't have the money yet. Part of that is also to get Kim some help, because this grant is creating its own desk worth of work.
Oh, yeah.
And we don't even have the money yet. So I'm doing the best I can, working with Kim all summer, and I watched the amount of work she had this summer, I'm like, oh my gosh, what's going on? In July and August with her, so we talked, and when we know we're gonna get, we finally get the official, you're good to go, we're gonna be looking for some support for Kim. And then this, in a way, and you can speak to this if you want, but we know we got Kim for an extra year, right? So this allows her to back off some things too, not just managing these new grant processes, but picking up some extra duties, so that she can make an informed choice for what she wants to do in the future. We're not hiring a replacement for her, I'm not, we're not putting out director of finance and HR, we're not going down that road. But if I don't find some help for Kim, I'm concerned with this grant that we're not, we're not gonna be able to pull through with the amount of work that is created. Just wanted you to know, and when that time comes, we'll let you know how we execute that plan, but we don't have the money yet, so it's all forward-thinking.
We did, I mean, we did approve some help for her last year, and that kind of went by the wayside, it was like a part-time thing, it was gonna be an ed tech that was gonna do part, and then the ed tech left, and so she was left without anybody. And I, I'm a hundred percent for that, I don't know how she keeps up with all these, all she does, I really don't.
This particular process, this particular process, Judy, adds, like, for every employee that's being paid out of a grant, there's like seven or eight, nine more things you need to do, that you don't need to do with the rest of us that are not hired under the grant. It's interesting, when you accept the money, the amount of work it creates.
But they can't get the money to you.
We don't have the money yet, but yet, we're still doing the job.
Mm-hmm.
For now.
Sounds nice.
Do you know any more about a deadline? You and I, Lori, you and I have been a little bad for it. Do you think it's gonna be the 24th? Because that's when we had to submit our grant.
We have to submit it by September 23rd. It's already been submitted a couple of times, they've come back and asked for certain things, I've given it back to them. They're also waiting on approval from the feds, to make sure that the state plan will be approved, so... I don't know. I mean, right now, I'm assuming that once all the applications start going in on the 23rd, they will start approving them, but I guess we'll wait and see.
So that's, that's it for my report. We'll run over that one, and see where it goes.
Nothing like a red tape, right? No kidding. All right, do you have, does anyone have any questions for any of the other administrators from the reports or in your packet?
No. Guys, they're okay.
Well, they've all been very busy.
Yeah.
That's obvious, that everybody's been very, very busy, and it's, it's great that the school is off to such a great start. It's just, I'm just so excited to have the kids back in the buildings again, you know, not in front of a computer at home, or coming in just a couple days in a week, but to have everybody in the building at the same time. And I can tell you from the first day that I was here, that the teachers were meeting, that they were, are as excited as the kids to have everybody back, so that's great. Okay, let's go on to progress monitoring.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna give a recap, you've probably heard it over and over again, about the summer program, but as you know, it was four weeks in length, it was four days a week for the kids entering first through sixth grade, and three days a week for the middle school kids. It was three hours a day for the kids, and four hours a day for staff. And we had in total, between ESY, the RTI, I guess, or additional support program, and the middle school program, there were sixty-four kids that were in attendance at some point over those four weeks. We did have a theme each week, I think that helped keep things engaging for the kids, you know, because it involved the Read Aloud every day, either an activity, or some sort of community building game, where all the kids came together, not the middle school, they sort of ran their own program for standards recovery, but it was interesting to see the kids that were in the four, five, six level, helping the K through three, when we mixed the morning activities, and we worked together, and we did as much as we could for the Read Alouds and the activities outside. We, if it wasn't raining, we were out under the tents for that part of the day. It was always ELA time, always math time. Really, the goal wasn't to move kids forward, it was really about maintaining, or making sure they didn't lose ground over the summer. We won't really know much of that until we start taking our fall assessments. So one of the next steps for us is to make sure we're tracking that progress of those kids that were here this summer, and see where they, where their fall assessment starts, and how much progress they make over, over this year. So we'll be keeping an eye on, on those kids, the staff was great. There was one day when Mrs. Scully didn't have many middle school kids, and we were outside tie-dyeing, she came right outside to help. So everybody pitched in, I would stand up and ask if anybody else wanted to do the Read Aloud, Mrs. Damaris stepped in, took the book, did the Read Aloud that morning. So everybody really pitched in, we had different snacks every week to go along with our theme, so we sent home a newsletter every week to let parents know what we had been working on. It was a culminating video that Mrs. Puffer helped me put together after I took some pictures. So, and, and one of the other things I'll just mention is, we had student volunteers help. So we had two of our own middle school students that were here, working in the elementary wing, the K through three wing, and we had four high school kids that are currently at the high school, but from Acton, trying to get their volunteer hours.
The community service hours, that's what I like to see.
Yeah, so I filled out forms for them, and, and they were here the days that they could be here, and they were great help, and they had a great time. Some of them asked if they could come back next year, if we do it again. One group was only supposed to come on Wednesdays, then they started coming Wednesdays and Thursdays, because they just really enjoyed being, you know, working with the kids, so...
That's great.
So overall, I guess challenges, the challenges at the beginning were getting the right communication out to parents in a timely manner. You know, a letter did go out, a blackboard did go out, but then you have parents saying they never got anything. So whether it went to their spam or whatever, I don't know, so maybe we just look at other ways to communicate that. Transportation at the beginning was a little bit of a challenge, we had one group of kids that got here at like 8:40 every day, and we had just started the Read Aloud. So there was some parent feedback on that particular issue, that said we would, you know, to look at that again, and make sure the kids are there in time, so that they're not feeling like they're coming late. So there were, there are a couple of challenges, but, and what I did notice is, we, there were some kids that came, it wasn't just academics, it was social. We have homeschoolers that were coming back in the fall, we let them attend. We had some remote kids that had been remote all year, we let them attend. We had a new student who was gonna be coming into Acton, had an IEP, we let him attend. Those kids, when we watch how they've walked into school this fall, it's been amazing. I think that piece may have helped them, to just become more familiar with how we do school, and who the teachers were, because the same faces are here for them. So I think that was a big plus for those kiddos. And I've watched...
Get to know other kids, too.
Yeah, and the kids that are coming back, that came, the confidence in some of those little guys, you know, the first day of school, they were here, and they were helping all the others, so it was, I think, successful in a lot of different ways.
That's great.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Challenges too, we have things to work on.
Probably the best summer school I've ever seen, Lori and her team, I give the credit to Lori, she did an outstanding job with us, I was so impressed.
When I looked at, when I looked at her plans at the beginning, and what she was planning for each week, I thought, oh, this is gonna be...
The themes, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So much fun. We had a lot of fun. And Andy was probably pulling his hair out of his head, because we were messing everything up, but...
It all worked.
But it was, the kids really, I think, had a good time.
I saw your final video there, it was very good.
Yes, yes.
Very good. It was fun to look at that.
The update.
Okay. Then let's move on to number seven, do we have any committee reports? Or we're gonna set some dates and times, right?
I would ask the policy committee to think about when you'd like to meet with Kim and I, and we can put them down, and we can build a yearly calendar, what works for you. I know CJ, you had some parameters by which you can zoom in, and other times that don't work for you, so we're here, we can work with whatever works for you.
Yeah, usually, I mean, I'm in meetings every day until like 11 o'clock, but after that, it opens up mostly.
So you can schedule something for us once a month, okay?
And we'll still wanna do it at 1:00?
Sure. We were doing the first Monday.
Yeah, I...
Yeah, it was.
Was it the first Monday, yeah?
So we'll pick it up in October.
That works for me.
Let me just look at my calendar real quick.
That's the fourth.
The fourth, oh, yeah.
Okay, so we would set a policy meeting for the fourth at 1:00 PM.
Sure.
And we'll do every Monday at 1:00 PM until we hit a holiday, because there are some Monday holidays. They don't always land on the first Monday, we'll have to just see which ones they are.
October is the second Monday.
What's that? All the indigenous people today?
Is the second Monday, so it's the 11th, so we're safe, we're safe for October.
I knew it was the following.
November will be the second one, too, with Veterans Day. That would be later in the month.
So we got that one too?
Yeah, so November 1st is a, is a good day, so we're good for...
To the end of the year.
Yeah, we're good, the next three months.
Great.
Okay, long range planning, anything?
We did not meet.
We need to.
We need to meet.
We need to, because of just what we've spent for repairs on the boiler, and Andy's gonna update us on, later on, some refrigeration things we've got going on, it's new business, but you can schedule away tonight if you want. Or we can meet before the next school committee meeting, which is what we tend to do.
That's what we tend to do.
You wanna do that?
Like at 4:15 or something?
Oh, with the 5, yeah, 4:15, before the next meeting, okay?
And that would be on October 16th? No, yeah, October 16th.
Is that the second Thursday, yeah?
Yeah, that's what's on here.
The 16th, yeah.
14th. Yeah. I'd like to add a negotiation committee, because eventually, we're gonna be meeting. And I mean, I think...
We wait for the 120-day notice, and I did mention it to the president of the association, of the Teachers Association, I did not to the support staff. And the Teachers Association, they're on it, they get it, so when they give us the 120-day notice, if you schedule something prior to that time, we can talk about whether that's a meeting, but if it's after that 120-day notice, and it's definitely like a negotiations-type, type meeting.
All right, so we'll wait.
A planning meeting, yeah, it'll be soon.
Okay.
We've got 120 days figured out, which is a lovely time.
So the second Thursday in October is the 14th.
That's what I thought, I was just looking, is there, Kim?
Well, it's...
14th.
On this sheet.
So it says October 16th, 21, on the meeting. It is the 16th, right? It is the 14th.
Yeah, the 14th, unless you wanna come on Saturday.
That's why I asked, no, I was wondering.
And then, November, we're doing Wednesday night?
Yeah, no, we're doing the 4th, we're doing the Thursday before, right? That's what you had on your sheet.
Okay, so why, why are you going down through that calendar? November will be the 11th, not the 10th.
I think that's a holiday.
The 11th is better than the 10th.
It's a holiday, that's why we went for the 4th.
Oh, we went to 10th, so that's a Wednesday.
We're gonna do the 4th.
No, it's the 3rd, isn't it the Thursday before?
Thursday before, yeah.
It's the Thursday before, it's not Thursday, the 11th, it's Thursday, the 4th, which would be seven days before that, right? It's still a Thursday night, just a different Thursday night.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's a holiday.
What date is it then?
November 4th.
November 4th. Yeah, and I can put that out in the update. And then, how are we looking in December, are these lining up, folks?
Yeah, these are lining up good.
Yeah. Of course, we'll do our budget stuff later, when we get into December, January.
Yeah, we can wait, of course, we can wait on that, for now, for today, anyway.
Okay, that's good, we've got our calendars squared away.
Okay, then, let's move on to new business, 8-1 is update on the kitchen cooler.
So, we had a service call approximately a month ago, on the cooler, the freezer is divided in half, it's half cooler, half freezer, and the components on the cooler side were having some issues, so I called for service, they came out and they looked at it, did a quick repair on it, to get it back up and running, and then when the company came in to do their annual maintenance on it, it was discovered and reported to us from Holly that that compressor and that whole system needed to be replaced. And she got a quote from the company that currently services the freezer and the, and the cooler, and the quote came in at $13,200. So Kim and I started having conversations about where the money was gonna come from, and she was starting to work her magic in that arena, and we decided that we would maybe take a look at the possibility of getting prices from other companies. And long story short, I reached out to Southern Maine Refrigeration in Bedford, and spoke with a gentleman out there who owns the company, and he provided us with a quote for $7,300, which will end up saving us $5,900. Very reputable contractor, gave us an itemized bid to compare both, and I recommended to John Antikin that we go with this, with this vendor, his timeline, his availability of getting the parts and getting it installed were quick, and I also have spoken with him about potentially picking up the service contract that is currently held by Superior Energy Solutions. And I also want him to take a good overall look at the other half of the system, because they're both 1990 vintage, which, as we, you know, go along and replace systems throughout the building, we are finding this, that usually if one goes south, the other one isn't far behind it. So the repair that was made on it got us by, you know, gained us enough time, so that we could look into the possibility of other contractors and other, other prices, and it's a good thing that we did, and it was something, you know, Kim kinda spearheaded the shop around, because this price kinda seemed a little...
Wow, yeah.
You know, we, I was unfamiliar with it, I didn't know if that was a good price or a bad price, I had no idea, and, you know, once we started doing some research, we found that, in fact, we, we did end up saving a significant amount of money by...
What's the name of this company now?
It is Southern Maine Refrigeration.
So unlike the boiler where I was, you were asking me, what about bidding? That was like an emergency to get this thing in and done before heating season. And working with Kim and Andy, I said, this doesn't, there was a perception that it was an emergency, Kim was able to talk with Holly and say, I don't think it's that much of an emergency, we'll keep the food good, because you've got food in there, you can't lose your food. But because the freezer was working, we could bring air in if we had to, we had a solution, but we didn't even need to go there. The thing's running on one cylinder, but it's running. So we were able, Kim was able to do the three bids and find a contractor that can do it at a good price. One of the people that we bidded with, E. Bryant and Eftan, he couldn't get to it till like Christmas, so that, took care of that one, and then we looked at the other two. So there is a difference in these capital improvements and how we approach them, based on whether it's considered an emergency situation, we need to execute it right away, because we're gonna be in trouble, or whether we can actually keep this thing running until we can get the right bids and then make a good business decision. So we've played this out two different ways this summer, this is the other way of doing it. I just wanted you to understand that there are different ways we do this, and this is a good example of two different ways to do it.
But this other company, we've never had to, we've never had any trouble with this refrigerator before, right, that we needed to call anybody? You said it's a 1990 model, everything's been going okay?
Like, like anything, there's been service and maintenance.
Oh, I know, but that's been okay, they haven't had exhaust and prices, and everything was okay, then, with that service.
Well, the company we had before this one was Superior. The company we had before that is no longer, so the Superior was actually the beginning of this year.
Right, that's, I mean, it's something, something different.
And so, it's, and I don't know if they bought them out, or, I'm not really sure the whole story, I just, I don't know.
Yeah.
I just know that I, I...
Didn't sound right.[1657.04]